Thank you.
Let's all stand for our pledge of allegiance first.
Pledge of allegiance.
Three, four.
We'll be in this space.
And to the people who just stands motivation. Then you could support. Thank you. Um, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Got a motion, got a second, all in favor with an aye? Aye. Any opposed, like sign, thank you. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the personnel agenda? Got a motion and a second, all in favor with an aye? Aye. Any opposed, like sign, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Got a motion and a second, all in favor with an aye? Aye. Any opposed, like sign, thank you. Dr. Jackson, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, thank you. Um, tonight we have quite a few recognitions that I'd like to get going, but before we do so, if you bring up the uh, the three Cs, please. This is the start of the year, we have quite a bit of, uh, we have had quite a few opportunities to celebrate the work here in our district. Uh, and I like to share those things each month. The first is, uh, we had our first ever high school media day where we were able to celebrate our athletes for the coming, uh, season. Our football players and had the media there to meet them and for them to start off the, the season. This is a new event that we hope will become a tradition, uh, not just in football, but in, um, uh, all of our, our varsity sports to celebrate the work that our students put in. It's great, next slide, please. Uh, we had our Chatham County Economic Development Corporation meet here at this new facility. Uh, these are the individuals who are out, um, selling our community and, uh, looking for and working with those, and those companies and corporations who are interested in relocating, uh, to Chatham County. Uh, we were a great, um, very, very pleased to host them here. They meet monthly, uh, and it was, it was a great, uh, event. Next slide, please. Uh, we had our beginning teacher training, uh, where all of our new teachers, new to the profession, uh, were very, um, uh, excited to get going, but we also, uh, were able to match them with mentor teachers and match them with our key instructional people, our key operations people. So they'll, they could understand, uh, how to, um, uh, access all of the tools and supports that we have, uh, in our school system. Our next slide, please. Um, we had our, our ESL and, and, uh, multi-language, uh, first-year teacher training as well. Uh, those are many of our teachers who are new to the country, who are here to support our dual-language program as well as our multi-language learners. Uh, and so they have their specific training and so we were extremely happy to have them join us and join the family here and supporting, uh, them. Our next slide, we continue to work with, um, uh, Mr. Wood, can we make that, uh, large enough, but it may be in, uh, screen. So thank you, so that maybe they can see that, thank you. Um, our Mount Air, Wolf Speed, uh, uh, those companies, uh, that are, uh, relocating and those who have been here for a while are working with our, our, our students here to really again, talk to them about the opportunities, uh, to talk to them about, uh, the, the jobs that are coming to our area. I hear parents say to me often that I'd love for my student to, to stay here, to come back to Chatham County and live and grow. We have great opportunities that are coming this way from, uh, very small, uh, companies to very large companies, but they're, a lot of them are really, really good paying jobs, uh, that we have to make sure our students are prepared for. So we really want to make sure that we're working with those companies to understand what their needs are. And Mount Air, Wolf Speed, uh, we're talking with, uh, I met with Toyota, uh, and groups like that. So we, we are, we are working feverishly to understand their needs so that we can prepare our students. The next one is, uh, Carolina Meadows, uh, supply donations. We have such a generous community. We have lots of groups providing, um, uh, school supplies. And so we want to thank, uh, publicly Carolina Meadows for their supply donation. Uh, we had our school nurse, uh, our lead nurse, uh, who was recognized and, and, uh, celebrated on WRL. Um, as they talked about school health services in the, uh, in our region and, and the work that we're doing, um, to support students. Uh, we had our, our, our convocation, um, uh, this year at the Wicker Center. Uh, and we had all of our staff there, what a great day. Um, and your eyes are not deceiving you, there is a couch being carried. Uh, so it was part of, uh, our theme this year is pivot. And so if you've ever seen the, uh, the clip from Friends where they care to try to, they can't get the couch up the stairs. And so this is, they had a good time doing it, but every school they celebrated. Uh, we had a great speaker, uh, Robbie Hudson, uh, who has written the book, if you read it, Pivot, uh, that really talks about being able to make adjustments on when, when you run into, uh, difficult situations. So we're excited about that. Our first day of school was a great, uh, next slide, uh, was a great, uh, day for us. Um, and, uh, for my 15th year, I got to, uh, spend the day with a kindergarten on the first day of school, the bus ride all the way to the, to their desk. That is one of the things that, uh, selfishly I get to do every single year. This year I got a lesson from Lola. Yeah, so, um, I learned an awful lot from Lola and I, one of the things I learned from Lola is, you know, when somebody asks you a question and you don't want to answer, you just say, maybe. This was great too. Next day, the first day of school was outstanding. Um, we were able to get out and visit lots of our schools and spend time there and the whole team went out to do that. Um, and so we were there. Our next, um, uh, slide is we, uh, celebrated the retirement of our transportation supervisor, Mr. Joe Kavanis. Uh, and we welcome our new, uh, transportation director, um, Mr. Randy Weaver, uh, to the district. But, uh, Joel has been with us for, um, quite a few years and is celebrating and transitioning into his next phase. And he told me he's going to be working on the farm, doing what he wants to do. So that's all. We had our first, uh, next slide, we had our first student advisory committee meeting. I want to thank, uh, uh, Mr. Poston and, and the team for pulling them together. And yet again, our students, they don't miss, uh, and they don't disappoint. They have real thoughts about what school should be for them and what the adults should be doing to make school a good place for them. And so we want to always have an ear for them and an opportunity for them to, uh, have voice with us, uh, as this is there. We're talking about their future and not our past. Uh, then we had a great visit last Wednesday. Uh, then we had a great visit last Wednesday with Governor Cooper, who came to visit Monqueo. Uh, and so we were excited that Monqueo was selected as a school to receive some of the governor's, uh, uh, school supplies. And so the governor spent time, but I was so very pleased with the staff and the students who were, uh, there to just celebrate, um, their school and to show off their school. Um, and really, um, we were able to just stand back and watch the school do what, uh, what schools do. Uh, and they were taking care of kids, teaching and learning, uh, and, and they allowed the governor to just spend time and watch. Um, uh, there, we want to thank all of our local officials who attended as well as our school board. Uh, last week I met with the Western, uh, uh, Chatham NAACP and the concerned citizens from Silo City to really talk about ways that we can partner and, and, and do work, uh, together. And so really, we, we will continue to, to, um, uh, focus on doing every single thing that we can, uh, to make sure that, um, we are providing grand opportunities for our children. Now, I generally don't take time for, um, uh, comments at this time, but today I really want to say to, um, uh, our community that we're off to a great start. Our schools are operating smoothly and routines are being reestablished, and I've enjoyed visiting schools and spending time with our students. Um, during my, during my visits, I've witnessed, uh, amazing instruction, and I've spent quality time with many happy students and, and staff members. But we have some challenges. Unfortunately, we continue to face significant challenges in filling hard-to-staff positions across our school system. Our most pressing issues revolve around middle and high school mathematics, as well as exceptional children's, uh, class, uh, teachers and bus drivers. To address this, we've implemented various strategies. We're offering incentives, expanding our recruitment efforts to identify qualified candidates for our open positions. But this is a national challenge. We are committed to using all available resources to ensure our students receive the education they deserve and continue to have access to the courses they need to make annual progress. But I need your help. I need your help. If you know of anyone who is passionate about working with students and has an interest in teaching, please encourage them to reach out to our human resources department. If you have a degree, if you have a degree in math, you have a degree in special needs, you have a degree in social sciences, we may be able to talk to you and have an assessment of your transcript, and you may be able to help us, uh, in our classrooms. Additionally, if you're a parent with a relevant degree and are in one of those areas and are willing to have your transcript assessed to determine if you could work for us full-time or part-time to be a certified teacher, uh, we would welcome your involvement. Lastly, if you're aware of any retired math teachers who might be willing to return to the classroom to serve as a tutor, a support mentor, an academic coach, please let us know. Your assistance is invaluable. It's crucial to emphasize that this is not, again, this is not a local issue. This is not, uh, something we can turn a switch and say we're gonna do, this is something we're gonna have to do together for our kids. For our kids. I need your help. If you know someone, please send them our way. If you can help, please step forward. And with that, we'll move on to the next item on the, um, superintendent's, uh, report. Um, and I believe that is the ASBO International Certificate of Excellence. Um, we are so very fortunate to have probably one of the best finance teams in the state, if not the country. And at this time, I'm gonna ask, um, Mr. Tony Messer to come forward and introduce his team, and I'd like for us to celebrate, uh, that they have again received the certificate, um, of excellence for annual comprehensive financial reporting for the fiscal year ending, uh, June, and we'll soon get the one for 2023. We, we know that's coming, how many years in a row has that been? Twelve years in a row. If you will have the A-team come up, uh, and join, they, they, they do smile during the day, I promise you.
So I'm gonna let them come up and introduce themselves, at least, tell their, their title.
Brittany Smith, Budget Director. Susan Campbell, Accounts Payable Specialist. Jenny Condry, Accounting Specialist III. Sandy Olstead, Payroll Specialist.
Denise Barton, Same Payroll.
Harriet Lovett, Accounting Specialist.
Andrea Hursley, Accountant.
So I get the privilege of working with, with these ladies on a daily basis, uh, you know, we're the, we're the engine in the background that kind of keeps things rolling, we're trying to assist whenever we're able to do that. I'm thankful to come to work and work with them every day, and I will say that in my 29 years of auditing and working for other districts, it's definitely been a privilege to work with the staff and to serve the parents and children of Chatham County Schools. Thank you.
You'll be in trouble, Jason. Well, thank you. We're needed again on Zoom. Thank you. Thank you.
That is.
Our assistant uncoordinated turn is worrying. You have to say you got that way. You say, well, you want the dollars as well. I need you to know that already. It's very nice to remind me of things. All right, we'll move on to public comment. And of course, we've got, I think there was four or five something here. So we've got three minutes break speaker. You'll come here and we will start with Emily Boyden.
My name is Emily Boyden, and I'm the parent of two kids in Chatham County schools. I'm here tonight to thank the school board for creating and hopefully adopting a resolution against SB forty nine, otherwise known as the Parents' Bill of Rights, legislation that was recently passed by our state legislature. In addition to being thankful for the resolution the board is proposing tonight, I am thankful we have a Board of Education that listens to their community, truly cares for their students, and is supportive of school administrators and staff. I am thankful that school boards in neighboring communities like Orange County and Chapel Hill Cardinal Schools have made strong statements against this legislation and are clear in their support of all LGBTQI+ communities. I am thankful.
Whether through intent incompetence or both, our legislature has created an incredibly damaging and confusing set of regulations that make vulnerable kids even more so. There's just a few of the questions that the law doesn't answer, but we as a community and you as the governing body of our school system will have to. One, how do guidance counselors balance the requirement to report confidential information with existing laws prohibiting this? Is the law unconstitutional? Two, will staff face barriers to delivering or obtaining emergency medical care? Does a teacher have to call a parent before they call nine one one? Three, lawsuits are inevitable with legislation this sloppy and suing the county is even encouraged by the law. Will these kinds of lawsuits drain already strained county budgets? Budgets that we need for educating our kids? Or will teachers be compelled to use pronouns that don't match kids' identity? I use she/her pronouns, and I would hope other people respect that. I wouldn't assume to correct someone else's on their own identity. Why would we want to force teachers into this role? How do teachers navigate restrictions on their speech without enabling bullying? Will they hush conversations about students' moms? What does that say to the bully listening? Can you even talk about boys and girls? These are gender identities too. Will people from other counties or even other states, to the points of the person before me, clog up our administration with book challenges based on discomfort with the true facts of history and challenges that don't even affect them? While the certainly bill was certainly intended to very publicly attack the LGBTQIA+ community and the ethos behind it undermines the very foundations of public schools and the roles that they serve in our communities. Many of the worst requirements in this law could cost kids the only trusted adults they have. If we don't figure out how to mitigate this cruel and sloppy law with compassionate clarity, we will be failing until we need us best. I thank you for the resolution. I urge you to pass it and ensure compliance with the state law does not sacrifice our values as stewards of the next election.
We'll move along to information items. All I have is. Ms. Boyden, you were first, right? Julie Ricker, I skipped. I'm sorry, my apologies. It was you were authority, so I jumped by. My apologies. Thank you. Oh, you're fine.
Good evening. My name is Julie Ricker, and I'm a proud Chatham County Schools' parent and volunteer, raising my voice, first of all, to thank our school board members and district leaders for your work at keeping your focus and your work at these meetings on the topics of utmost importance to the students and staff of Chatham County Schools. You are doing the work to ensure that our facilities are safe. You're partnering with the Chatham County Commissioners to fund our schools as best you can, despite the lack of adequate state funds, allowing Chatham County to offer its teachers one of the highest local salary supplements in the state. It is clear to me that you examine issues through the lens of potential impact on students, as you're doing with this proposed resolution regarding the concerns you have around SB forty nine. Thank you for your work to well-serve all students in the district and provide each of them with a safe learning environment that they deserve. We can't be pro-student without being pro-teacher. As I did in my last public comments during Teacher Appreciation Week, I'm asking that you continue to also focus your attention on the impacts of SB forty nine and the other recently passed education legislation on our teachers. Please do everything you can to support them in teaching honest and accurate content. They should not shy away from important topics or purge their bookshelves for fear of complaint or controversy. Please ensure that they are being valued and that their training and knowledge is being respected. Please spare them from tasks that will be time impediments and allow them instead to keep their focus on solving the real challenges they face as they work to facilitate students' academic progress and support their overall well-being. At a time when it is so hard to attract new professionals into education fields and retain the talented teachers that we currently have, I ask that you do everything you can to ensure educators know they are safe and protected and valued within our district. Please make it clear to staff that they are safe to come to you with their questions and their fears and their concerns, and that you will work to minimize the negative impacts this legislation has on them as you are pledging to do for our students. I believe this county is filled with parents like me who love their schools and have immense respect and appreciation for the educators who serve their children. Let's keep doing all we can to keep our teachers coming back another day, another year, so that they will tell our educator friends that Chatham County Schools is the place to be. As a lover of children's literature, I'll end with a quote from The Phantom Tollbooth by Morton Jester. At the end of the novel, Princess Reason says, "Whatever we learn has a purpose, and whatever we do affects everything and everyone else." It is much the same with knowledge. Whenever we learn something new, the world becomes richer. Let's keep allowing our teachers to make Chatham County children richer by growing our learners and expanding their worlds. Thank you.
Ms. Ricker, my apologies again. And you said to start with staying focused. I lost focus there, but we appreciate your comments. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move along to information items. Overview of dual-language and multilanguage learners programs. Mr. Poston, Ms. Little, Dr. Moran.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I am Amanda Moran. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Academic Services and Instructional Support. The following presentation will outline how our district supports our multilingual learners or our ML students. You heard me correct, we have a new acronym in the place of ESL. We will now be referring to our students as ML.
Thank you for defining that for us, too. I appreciate it.
We'll do that tonight. In order to address the opportunity gaps and provide enriching experiences for our students and to meet state and federal assessment benchmarks for these students, we have several academic programs in place to support our students. So I'm here to share tonight a little bit more about these programs. We have Mr. Poston, our Senior Executive Director for Excellence and Opportunity. He will be sharing with you a little bit more about our dual-language program, which you know is a nationally recognized program. Ms. Little, our Executive Director for Federal Programs and School Improvement, will share information about our programs for multilingual learners.
Good evening. So just to clarify a little bit, the federal government still uses ELL or EL or ESL. North Carolina chose to go with multilingual learner. So in federal documents, you're going to see English language learner, English learner.
What was your reminders to that word?
Just so that you're clear. Okay. So we're going to talk to you a little bit tonight about just multilingual learners in general. And so you will see on our first slide, the why is in curriculum and innovation, and we want to make sure that all of our schools meet or exceed growth as measured by EVOX and to maintain a school grade of a C or better. And we're going to try to do this through professional learning around the standards. I mean, we do have new ELD standards for the state. Our next slide shows you just a few little statistics. We have about eighty-eight hundred students. Our largest three classifications of white being fifty point seven percent, Hispanic or Latino around thirty-two percent, and African American around eleven percent. This is just kind of a running trend data of what our numbers in the ML program have been. You will see a little bit later to become identified as multilingual or in the EL program, there is a screening test after a home language survey is done when they enroll. So based on the answers to that determines whether or not the children get screened, then determines if they get services in the ML program or not. And then you'll see each school, this is this year or actually the end of June data, is for each school. And those numbers continue to go up, just so you're aware. Yes.
Now we have to say manipulate things. I don't know why, but they do. Look back to twenty thirteen and what were the standards for a child to make it then versus now or in between? Are they across the board, apples to apples, or apples, oranges, potatoes?
When you say make it, do you mean qualify for the white crowd? So for the most part, they have been similar. I will say for the past probably six or seven years, there's been a more standardized, you have to make sure that every district has the home language survey. And from that home language survey is determined whether or not we will actually go in, reach out to the family and interview them even further to find out what language they actually speak at home, what's the language that the child actually communicates in most often, et cetera, to even determine whether or not we do screen them. So it has gotten a little more, I guess you could say, common across the state, if that helps you. We now, this year, for the first time, actually have a home language survey that is required to be in Power School. Ours has been there because we have put that in there a few years ago, but there's a standardized four questions that the state requires us to have now. So that just started this year. It's a good question. Our next slide is going to show you, so with multilingual learners, even dual-language fits under the umbrella of teaching children second languages. So it is one of our instructional service delivery models for children of a second language. No, not. No, not every child participates. We only have certain schools that have dual language. But what I wanted you to see here in the instructional service delivery models. Is that they do change a little bit over the grade spans. You'll see in all three grade spans, you'll have dual language and of course those are at specific schools. Um, there's co-teaching. So an EL teacher or an ML teacher with a core teacher. Um, you can have sheltered or content area pullout. So sheltered instruction is. Um, an EL teacher can teach, especially at the high school. We have one that is an English teacher and teaches the ML students. Um, the content, whether it's English one, English two, et cetera. Um, we also have pullout direct instruction. Um, we do have certain schools that have wanted to participate in Kate Kinsella's um academic vocabulary toolkit. So we have some schools that actually have their ML teachers will work on that program um with them as well. Uh, and so you'll just see across the the grade spans what we have. I will tell you that we have forty-two um ML teachers across the district, so I want to just first say thank you. Um, we are very fortunate in Chatham County to have for the non-dual language schools around a one to twenty-five-ish. Because that's always a plus or minus um three or four. Ratio of EL or ML teacher to ML students. And then the dual language schools, since dual language is a service delivery model, we increase that ratio to about one to thirty-five. It could be up to one to forty. Um, but we are very fortunate. That is relatively low for most of the districts in our state. So um I just, I will, I want to say thank you for that. Um, and so next what we'll do is we'll let uh Mr. Poston tell you a little bit more about um the dual language program in particular.
Um, I was curious about teenagers and um I know my neighborhood meeting a sixteen-year-old. He had just arrived, this is a couple of years ago, but he had just arrived from El Salvador. And um, and he didn't speak any English. We were speaking in Spanish. But um, I wondered, just when you have uh kids just starting out learning English in the teenage years is different from kids that progress in our system. You know, uh, in improving their English over time. And I just wondered if you might speak to that dynamic a little bit, because some people have since asked me and I thought, you know, I'd like to just ask more while we have this opportunity.
Great question. When they come in in the K five um grade span, it is a little bit easier because they're still learning how to read. They're still learning reading in general um and listening and speaking and writing. So that's what we have to remember is that all of our ML learners, we're not just looking at just reading, right? So we look at four domains, reading, writing, listening and speaking. So we need to make sure that we're hitting all those domains. And so that's what our ML teachers help us to do. Now at the high school, we're getting a little better. I can't, I can say that we have room to improve. When we do have newcomers, and that's what you're talking about, when we have kids that come in with this second language and speak zero. Um, English or no very little English. We try to make sure that we shelter them for a longer period of time so they're with their ML teacher. Or if it happens to be dual language, we have some children that might be able to participate in the dual language program. So we build that first language up first so that they can acquire that second language a little easier. So we're not perfect at it by any stretch, but especially at the high school, because we've had influx of newcomers. Um, it does get a little more difficult to kind of know where they actually stand in their home language. In order to help us kind of know where to navigate and with the second language of English. Um, I do know that JM does a great job trying to place those children. Um, we do, for the most part, at all of our high schools, do have Spanish-speaking interpreters or someone at the school that can help support for a short time. But that's what our ML teachers are there to do. So we don't just do everything by speaking. We we do work with them on showing them picture clues, things like that, in order to help them begin to understand even just to navigate. School initially, because it's a cultural change for many of these kids. So to understand the school part first and then shift. So we do try to shelter them a little bit more with maybe only one or two elective classes. And then they're with their EL teacher the rest of the day. And then we'll expand those um options later as they get a little more acclimated to the school. Does that help a little bit?
Thank you. We're extremely excited about our dual language program here in Chatham County. Um, want to give you just some brief information about it. Our program is considered a fifty-fifty model where students receive fifty percent of their instruction in English and fifty percent of their instruction in Spanish. Um, in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, we changed our allocation plan and that was really big for us. We moved math out of um middle school. Um, we focused down on Spanish language arts and science in middle school. Um, and we also have a really um keen focus on Spanish literacy in K eight. We also make sure that our students who are involved in dual language, as Ms. Little mentioned, our multilingual students. The advantage of dual language is they have an opportunity to take advanced course, advanced placement courses in Spanish. Um, history, literature and culture in grades nine twelve, and that's really an important piece of our program. Our dual language students and our our dual language graduates also are recognized by the state of North Carolina. And they often earn a bilingual C seal on their diploma upon graduation, meaning they're um bilinguistic and both Spanish and English. Just some history of dual language. Dual language started in two thousand and five in our district at Southeast Elementary and then expanded to North Chatham in twenty thirteen. Real excited. Our first class graduated from Jordan Matthews in twenty eighteen. And we'll have our first graduating class from C fourth this year. We're excited about that. And currently we have about one thousand one hundred and ninety-four students in our dual language program throughout our six schools. The research about dual language, um, our district parallels that research. Um, before COVID, our dual language students outpaced non-dual language students, especially in grades six through twelve. We make sure that they have a strong foundation of English and Spanish literacy skills. Um, and as I mentioned earlier, we want to make sure that our dual language students have exposure to high-level courses. Um, at CCC, C and AP courses and oftentimes university courses. Our goals of our program are pretty straightforward. Want to make sure that our students receive a high level of Spanish literacy and proficiency and speaking, listening, reading and writing. We also want to make sure our students exceed academic levels that are set by the state. Uh, we want to make sure that our students are um positive cultural, have positive cultural attitudes and beliefs and behaviors. And we want to make sure we produce bilingual citizens. We have lots to celebrate in our dual language program throughout our um six schools. In twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, the dual language students, um, I performed non-dual language students in fourth grade and fifth grade math and science. In twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, our dual language cohort grew and star Spanish, often exceeding their starting list group. And in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, ninety-seven point seven of our dual language high school students scored three or higher on the Spanish AP exam. Um, compared to eighty-four percent across the state. Really proud of them. And this year we were able to graduate seventy-six dual language seniors from Jordan Matthews who received a global language endorsement on their part. Uh, we as a district are really fortunate and we appreciate your support. That we're able to provide um onboard professional development for our dual language teachers. We have national consulting companies that come in to um make sure that they are up to date on the most up-to-date research and teaching practices. We also have onboarding training for new teachers. Um, and we have units for our teachers in K eight, um, in grades K eight, and we also provide lots of materials for non-dual. Some challenges that we um often face in dual language. Um, scheduling is never easy. Um, it's oftentimes even more complicated with our dual language schools. And so we work um to make sure that students get what they need in both English and Spanish. Um, staffing needs um sometimes can be difficult, so we are always thinking about how we can creatively um staff our our places where there are any gaps. Um, making sure that we um middle school opens up a whole new opportunity for students to have so many um opportunities for different courses and electives. So making sure that we provide all the right um materials and engagement for our middle school students. Um, lastly, expansion, we oftentimes get calls from folks across the district saying, hey, can my school be a dual language school? We know we're going to open up more dual language schools. And so that's a um a conversation that we are oftentimes having. How do we expand this program to impact as many students as possible?
So as I mentioned earlier. Multilingual students incorporate all of our children who are learning that second language. Um, so we do have students who are in the dual language program that also um participate in other areas when they're in need. But if they're not in the dual language program, you will see that we do have certain curricula that we use. And I will just shout out another huge thank you. I think with a lot of work right before COVID. Um, since I have been in the district in this is year eighteen. Everybody say wow. Um, since I had been in the district, we had not had any true curriculum across the district. And with Dr. Moran's support and the board's support, we were able to do a large purchase for our district. So now our teachers actually have a standardized curriculum that they can use for different grade spans and different levels. Um, of our children, and these are just the examples here. So I just wanted you to see those. Um, and so the children will be exposed to those depending on the scheduling of the school and just depending on their needs of service. So however they um complete the access test, so every year we have the access test and children receive a composite score. So based on those scores will be based, it it will base the service delivery model. So we, the higher they are to actually exiting, they probably won't receive as many services as they do if they're at a one or a two composite level. Okay. Um, so this year we're focusing, as I mentioned, we have new ELD standards or English Language Development Standards. And we have partnered with the grade level directors. Last year, we focused on high school core content teachers and the ML teachers at the high school level. So they received a year-long training in the new ELD standards. And the one thing that the state has done is they have actually um aligned them to the English language arts standards. The science standards, the social studies standards, the math standards, so all the core standards. So it's been easy for the teachers to actually see, oh, these actually do relate to one another. Um, so that has been nice. This year our focus is middle school. Uh, so we will be working with those middle school core teachers this year. We have kind of held off on elementary because most of our elementary teachers are still doing letters. So hopefully next year we'll be able to um tag on to the elementary to help support them in learning the new standards as well. Um, other trainings that we do, there you saw earlier that certain schools did the academic vocabulary toolkit curriculum. And we actually have a trainer that will come in and work with them all year long in order to um implement that with fidelity. Um, same thing with um English three D and the other um programs that we have. So as I mentioned a little bit earlier, our accountability requirements is that access test. It is given every year between January and March. Every child, even if a parent has opted out of ML services, they are required to take the access test. And it is the in the access to test, excuse me, measures language acquisition in all four domains that I mentioned earlier. So they are assessed in all four domains. It is not an easy assessment. I will share that with you. Um, and so our, it it takes a lot for a child to um pass or have a composite score of four point eight or better. That's how they exit. We do have to, after they exit, we do have to monitor them for the next four years to make sure that everything is going well within their classes. If not, we, our teachers can kind of jump in to kind of find out what's happening um and help mitigate anything that might be a problem. Very few instances, but there are times where we have to re-identify. Um, and so they can get their services back if something's going on that we didn't see before.
Not that, I may not use or reiterate its purpose, but I had a uh someone talk to me about that testing and how hard it was and saying, why is it so hard? This is unfair. And I, and I think I was able to say that the testing was really designed to make sure they don't get lost in the system. And to make sure that their skill level is sufficient to be able to receive the learning and to be able to participate, not in it as an effort to keep them behind. So can you speak to that a little bit?
So this test is based on academic language acquisition. So as you know, when we are out, out to dinner, having a great time, that's more informal language we have with one another. In a classroom, that language should be a little more formal. You're going to get to your tier-two vocabulary. Tier one is where you're more formal and words that we use every day, tier two is a step up. Tier three is usually content very specific. So we're going to start using in the academic world, we're going to be using that tier-two and tier-three language. And forming very complete sentences and making sure everything that we do is in complete sentences even when we respond. So it is a very different um. Test in that it is testing for their language acquisition in an academic setting. Um, and so it is a little more difficult. Um, I think one of the things that we struggle with in our district is the speaking and writing sections, are the speaking and writing sections. We're not used to speaking or our children are not used to speaking into a computer every day. And when they take that assessment, that is exactly what they're doing. So it is something to take, to get used to, and many of our teachers are working with our kids. Uh, one of the programs you saw up there before, we just purchased flashlight. And that is a program where the kids are actually given prompts to respond to, and they actually will speak into the the device. And it will record for them, so the teachers can go back and listen and kind of assess what they've done. Uh, and so, and the writing is the same. Uh, when I took a, a, it was a little course on how they grade the writing. I was shocked because they couldn't go back to the screen before to find out, oh, what is, what is it that I just read? Um, and then they have to actually write the prompt on it. Um, and so it is much more academically based than it is formally. We may see kids and they speak to us in class and have lots of conversation. And you think, oh, their English is great. Academically speaking and writing um and reading it is a very different story. Does that help?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, so you can skip to the next slide. So this is just to show you, we are definitely not where we want to be. I'm just going to share that with you right now. Um, but in two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, we had fifty-four students exit. Uh, that means they had a four point eight composite or higher. Um, this past year we had eighty-two. Um, and for over a fifty percent increase, that that's, we're, we're very happy about that. Um, we, the, the children also have to meet growth projections. So it's not just exiting. If they don't exit, that's fine, but they do have growth projections by the state. They have to meet those um goals and we have went from seventeen to twenty-five percent. So that is a big jump. It's definitely not what we want, but they are moving in the right direction. And so we're very happy about that. Next. So one of the things we, we really tried to think of, because some of these kids have told us, I don't, I don't want to leave the program. I want to stay with my teacher. Which is wonderful. That means that they have connected with somebody and have a relationship with somebody that really, they know cares about them, right? And so, but we still want them to exit this program, right? And so we started the Celebration of Excellence um last year. We will have another one in here. Um, on the twenty-third. We had several students that responded to their teachers and said, I want to be at that celebration next year. And if that's, we can get kids motivated that way, we are happy to do it. But it was a wonderful celebration. Um, we were able to celebrate all fifty-plus kids who had exited. We had a speaker there. We were going to, we're going to do the same thing this year. We make it a grand event. Because it is very special and they should be honored for that. And so um they really did seem to enjoy that. So we're going to make that an annual, annual tribute to those schools' kids. Next. Um, so as dual language, you talked about some of our needs, just in general, scheduling, scheduling, scheduling. What can we say? There's just so much we can do with the time that we have with um with our students. We do have, when we have vacancies, sometimes our ML teachers, they are certified teachers. May have to help out in some of those areas, and that has been a struggle, especially, you know, COVID and kind of beyond. Um, I will say for staffing needs, this is the first year since I've been responsible for the multilingual program. That we've really only had two vacancies. And I'm, I'm so pleased by that. I don't even know what to say. We've just done a good job trying to recruit those folks and they want to work with our kids. So I'm very happy about that. Um, professional development, some of the things that we would like to do is really help folks understand. What language acquisition is and what it takes to acquire another language. So that they can understand that that takes time for, for students. Um, but that's an area that we do want to focus on when we can. And then expansion, you guys know that we're, we're growing as a district, so those numbers are going to be growing with us. Um, this year we, we have twenty-seven currently languages in our district. Uh, so I anticipate that to increase as well. Yeah. Um, just some things that we have done. We started the, for the first time this past summer, an ML enrichment camp. Uh, we didn't have as many come out as we wanted, but we had a, a good solid fifty, sixty children. We focused on grades four through eight. Um, and we focused on children who were. Close to exiting. So we wanted to try to give them that little double dose or extra dose. Um, and I think they, they had a good time and I, we have put into the budget for next summer to do the same thing. Um, and to add some pieces to it as well. Just so you know, that many of our multilingual um learners actually are served through overlapping support programs. So we have through dual language, through McKinney Benton, through migrant, through communities and schools, through the Hispanic liaison. So we have quite a few of our students that actually probably might hit every one of those categories. And um, this year, uh, well, really in the spring, we started our first parent advisory council. And so we hope to build their capacity so that they can help build other guardian of parents capacity. We don't, they, they don't always wanna hear from us, but they want to know and understand schooling and how they can be advocates for their children. So our goal is with this group is that they become the advocates and help other parents understand um what they can be doing within our schools. And I think that is, I think that's it.
It's great.
Any questions?
It's just very exciting and great. And, and I think it's showing because we receive more and more multilingual learners going on. And some of them are coming back now and help the community because they loved it, you know, and I just, um, I'm just, it's like the long range, like you've been working on this for so long and it, it's really showing up and I just I'm just so happy to hear from both of you about this. These programs, so thank you.
Thank you.
Um, you said twenty-seven languages. Are they kind, are they across the board at the, all the schools? Because years ago I went to a conference when ESL was just getting started. And the school in Cary, we were going around the table. And uh, s- school in Cary said they had twenty-two languages in that one school. And I felt like I was out of place. So I said, well, I have two. I have uh, English and Southern.
Our, you know, um, we have schools that may have Spanish speakers and that's it. Um, but then more of our, more of these schools generally tend to have more languages in them. They uh, families live more closer, closer to the RTP area and they live here and they commute out. And so that's where you're gonna see more of the schools with multilingual, um, more multilingual kids.
Now, I mean, I would like to sit here and say that we've mastered the Spanish dual language, but we learn every day, you know? But for any teacher, that, that language that comes in from uh Vietnam or uh you know, somewhere else. That's a curve ball. Because, because I was at Silver City Elementary when the first two Hispanic students moved from the Silver City. And um, it is, it's, it's, it's tough. And so I think the challenge we're gonna have is, is all the new, I didn't realize we're up to twenty-seven. I, I knew we had more, but
It is, when, when we have languages we haven't seen before, it is a challenge. Uh, we're very fortunate to contract with Chiklay in Chapel Hill and we just actually had an interpreter um for a Russian family. And so, and that is not something that we have done before. And where I anticipate, we're going to have a lot more of that. So we, while we can't have an interpreter in the classroom for every teacher, that won't happen. But part of that is the ML teacher working with the child in terms of helping acclimate them to school first. Learn basic vocabulary first so they can get around and navigate. So you have to start gotta start slow with them so that they can at least feel comfortable in the atmosphere where they are.
Kind of thankful that, uh, I'm very thankful that Vin Vast is here, but they may bring some challenges.
It's okay, we're ready.
Oh, yeah, I'm just saying, I'm just saying that's, that's another line. Do you have any questions?
Do you have one uh curiosity question that, and hopefully kind of short. But um, for our dual language learners that have been learning Spanish and English uh simultaneously, I'm curious if we have relationships with universities that are primarily Spanish, you know, I'm thinking like in Oaxaca or wherever it might be, um, or in Europe even, but.
We do have one university um that's paired with us, Syracuse University. And so we have students now who are enrolled in the Syracuse University course. James Campus. And we have about forty kids um participated last year and are on college credit. Um, been in communication with USC G. Um, we go there, have our kids who are rich in the summertime, our dual language students. We do, um, so we work with them to, to provide courses for our students. Well, like your idea maybe some Spanish-speaking univers-
Oh, yeah.
Universities that come off our classes, but we are currently enrolled in Syracuse University and Buffalo Kids.
That's exciting. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to item B, policies leave the schools updates and of course, Dr. Jackson, Dr. Moran.
Our next item for you is another acronym. The policies to lead the schools for the PLS is the web-based policy reference manual developed by the North Carolina School Boards Association. It provides local boards um in HLA with resources for up-to-date legally compliant sample policies. And it's a great resource for us. Um, tonight's policy update is designed to assist our board in complying with the requirements of the NC Session Law Senate Bill Forty-nine, which creates the new chapter of the general statutes titled Bill of Parent Rights. It also amends chapter one fifteen C of the general statutes. Um, the new requirements went into effect on August sixteenth, but they um are applied immediately beginning with this school year. So we wanted to work swiftly to be able to get those policy changes in place. Um, we are seeking a waiver of the first read and final approval of these policies due to the short turnaround that we have from the state to comply with these requirements. We will bring additional um policy updates as they become available or, or as we receive different advisement from our um council. So most of the changes you'll notice in the chart, if you could pull up the policy change charts. You'll notice most of these adjustments are um to the legal references to policies we already have or the cross-references. Or it might just be a slight word change to include um some wording that is in the new um Parent Bill of Rights. Um, one policy in particular, thirteen ten, the parental involvement also received some additional suggested revisions and input from um our attorney. And the specific changes are outlined in each one of those policies. So the chart you see will show you the name of the policy, the specific changes um that the PLS is recommending, um, and any legal requirements associated each one. So we are requesting um for you to waive the first reading so that we can go ahead and get these policies in place.
I noticed that motion.
Wait, no, hold up. Oh, we got a motion. Will it's, uh, I'll second. And now a discussion. Go ahead. But we wouldn't be in compliance with the law, would we? Mister, uh, let's hope he will.
So the law, um, it's originally passed by the General Assembly, vetoed by the governor. General Assembly then overrode the veto. So it is in effect, there's a portion of the law, part three, which deals with healthcare, which is not going to affect until December. Now, the state superintendent has requested a postponement of the effectiveness of the bill, but there has not been action. So at the moment, the law is the law.
I would also, and these are policies that came from the North Carolina School Boys Association um, has recommended that we need to go ahead and move on now. There will be others. These are mostly editorial um, policies that reference the new law into policies that we already have. None of these are brand new policies. None of them. And most of them are just a reference. If you look at the chart, it, it's referencing the new law in the footnotes of the, of those current policies.
Anything that changes, high school, uh, the, the school or association will come back and make uh tweets to them and we would in turn do that.
Yes, sir.
What does the, I noticed that you have the designation required, recommended and and strongly recommended means that the provisions are required by law, but they do not have to be addressed in policy. Although NC SBA strongly recommends that the provisions be added to policy. Um, do we know why certain provisions were designated as strongly recommended and why they're being strongly recommended?
We, we, we do not. And, and, and again, um, they have a whole battalion of lawyers that really kind of go through this to, and you all pay for the service annually. So this is their, these are their recommendations and typically when they send you those edits along with that, they have done the, the work. I'll be happy to, if you, if you'd like to to, to wait, if that's okay, Mr. Mitchell, we'll be happy to ask and, and so to get those questions answered. But uh, generally speaking, uh, when we typically get these types of editorial kinds of where it's not really a lot of substantive changes, we typically bring those to you to keep us in compliance with um, uh, keep our, 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 our policy manual up to date.
And you did say that some of the other policies coming down the pike might be more substantive and, and ones that we would want more discussion on perhaps.
Absolutely.
Those are, those are still coming.
Um, I, I don't even know if they've been written, but I can only say that these are edits to current policies that you already have. None of these are brand new policies. I will say the additions and, and, and um, things that Mr. Mitchell suggested, um, uh, that's the thirteen ten policy uh was, was uh substantially revised, but it's pretty much replacing the same policy you have unless you wanna say something new to it.
But I have another question about that too, and, and this is more just a clarifying question, but it also doesn't prevent us from making our own potential tweaks to such policy. Um, and in, in the event that we think that some of the policies coming down the pike might need a change in addition to what the School Board Association has done. And um, and possibly offering some things to the School Board Association.
Well, no, uh, yeah, it, that, y- your process for um, uh, amending, editing, changing, adjusting, customizing your policies hasn't changed. It, it, it hasn't changed. We still have the process. It'll come to us the same way these have come. But sometimes there are more opportunities for you to customize than they are. They, these are not major changes from your original policies. These are more references to the new law that's required in the footnotes. If you look at that, most of them are, are footnote references to them with the exception of the the, the changes that Mr. uh Mitchell provided for us.
Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? And all in favor with an aye? Any opposed, like, son? Thank you. Item C, uh, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three accountability results, so. Like, we're in, go ahead.
The next item is a little bit of a curve ball because normally you would see us presenting this information in October. Um, but because the information was released this past week from the State Board of Education on September sixth, we um wanted to go ahead and celebrate and highlight a couple of um our spotlight areas of the district. Um, obviously we got a lot of that data last week, so we really want to be able to dig into that. So we will be bringing to you in October the more comprehensive presentation that will give you specific growth data, school-specific information, as well as how we compare regionally and at the state. Um, the information that comes from each of the school districts is, it's vast, so we need a little bit of time to do that. But we didn't want to wait until October to at least share a few of these highlights. Included in your packet is a copy of the press release that we shared on September sixth, as well as an infographic that we have used on social media to share a few of our highlights about our data. Um, and as I mentioned, in October, we'll kind of dig in a little more. Um, also, we wanted to show you on our district website and also show our stakeholders, if you could go to our district website. All of the accountability data, you click on the main academic tab. And if you'll scroll down to where it says testing and student information. Scroll down on the page just a little bit, kind of gives you the background about accountability if you'll keep going down. Actually, go back up, sorry, I can't see the screen. Go back up. And there should be on the far left-hand side a button that says testing. Testing results, you see it? Now scroll down on the page. So there are two sections here. One will show you the current testing results. Um, and you can see all of the different graphs and charts from our district. And as we receive more of that information, we'll continue to um populate those charts. And then the button right underneath that has twenty years worth of data. So if you really like um digging into data, you can see all of that past historical um information for us as well. So while we're not going to go into the large presentation, the data is here for anyone who would like to see that. So here's share a little bit more about our highlights. Um, we have our director for accountability and testing, Ms. Darlene Rink Frosty.
Evening, Mr. Karen, Dr. Dyson, and members of the board, I'm Darlene Rink Frosty. Thank you for um having me um, present for a couple of minutes. Um, so we had some really great highlights this year. We had Bennett School that went from a C grade to a B grade. So that showed us some fabulous growth. And then we also had two schools that were in state designated low performance status that have exited that status based on their data from this past year. And that is that Bonly School and Jordan Matthews School. Those two schools also have new principals to Chatham County. And uh, we feel really lucky that we were able to have some strong candidates, um, bring some great talent to um, and help our students in the year, grow during the year. So um, some other highlights were we had a hundred percent of our elementary schools and a hundred percent of our K-eight schools meet or exceed growth. We had a sixteen out of nineteen of our schools have a school performance grade of C or better. And at our next meeting in October, uh, as Dr. Moran mentioned, we will go deeper into exactly how those grades are calculated and what comes into those, those numbers. We um outperformed the state's proficiency in every subject area in grades three through eight. So we're above the state average. Also in um, EOC composite, math one, biology. For the ACT, the number of students that scored above a composite of nineteen, which is what the state considers proficient, we were ten percentage points higher than the state. Um, which I think really speaks to our high school students and a cumulative score for students all the way from grades K through eleventh. That's an assessment that's given to our eleventh graders. Um, we had some schools too that are, have shown to meet or exceed growth over eight years consecutively. So we actually had two years where growth was not measured due to COVID. But if you take out those two years, we have um where we've been measuring it over time. We have quite a schools, few schools that met that growth for, or exceeded for eight years. And that's Monkeer, Bonly, JS Waters, Moore-Chatham, Northwood, and Virginia Cross. And we also have a series of schools that have met, were exceeded over five years, and that's Silco, Silver City and Pittsboro Elementary. So those are a couple of the nuggets. Um, but we will definitely be sharing more with you in October. Do you have any question?
One more nugget, and I hope I'm not wrong, because I read it, I read it on the, on, on the state's website. The um the early college.
Yes, is an A.
Is an A.
Yes, and they exceeded growth as well since here. They met it in A, so it's a great testament to that program. And to Chatham County Schools, so.
Any questions?
Oh, and our graduation rate went up three percentage points also, which is huge. And we're above the state by over two and a half percent. So that's really exciting because if we could just eat away at that year by year, it'll be fantastic. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Item D, let's see, Parents' Bill Rights Update, Sash Report, Senate Bill Forty-nine, Dr. Moran, Dr. Jackson, please.
To here, um, tonight it is, um, as you all have heard on, I guess, a couple of um instances, uh, Senate Bill Forty-nine was passed. And it's, it was passed earlier, vetoed, and it would do override came on September, I mean, on August twenty-third, but Friday before we returned to school. So we have spent an inordinate amount of time, one, trying to understand um the, the bill, its intended scope. Uh, and I can't say that we have a full um, throated understanding of all of that at this time, but what, what we have done is we've taken the time to go through the uh, the bill. Uh, we've gotten support from We've gotten support from legal counsel. We've gotten support from our state associations to try to understand just the intent. I will say, and again, having sat in this seat for about fifteen years now, this is probably the most sweeping piece of legislation I've seen in terms of just trying to understand its depth and breadth over time. So we're asking for two things. We're going to ask for your patience as we try to understand what we're being asked to do, but we also want you to have some level of assurance that you'll find that after our review, a great deal of the information in the legislation or things that schools have always done, and particularly that we have always done here in Chatham County. And I've looked back over several years in terms of processes and practices, and these things have been in place for many, many years in in our district. And so what I've asked staff to do is to just go through, and Dr. Moran is going to just walk you through just the key components of the law. We really don't have a lot of detailed answers tonight, and we will, because as you heard earlier, we will be getting direction from the General Assembly. We're told that there may be some technical corrections in the budget. We we've not been, that's not been confirmed, but that's what we believe will happen. And the second piece is that the State Board has a big part in developing several of the items inside. So we would ask for your patience as we try to understand this. And if tonight, we have to say that we'll have to get back to you on something, please. I I would ask that you give us some level of grace on that. So I've asked Dr. Moran to share the information, and then we'll kind of tell you where we are, that our plans.
The presentation, as Dr. Jackson mentioned, is a brief overview of a pretty complex piece of legislation. And so what we hope to be able to do is share with stakeholders what's currently known, what our progress is as a district in moving towards implementing these legal requirements, and then also kind of what our anticipated next steps will be. Another piece that's on your abstract that is not in our slides is the financial impact. While currently, we have not seen a financial impact to our current budget, we also know that there could be some impact as we move forward and we carry these out. So we tried to just kind of project a bulleted list of some of the types of things that we could incur in our budget this year as a result of carrying these out. If you'll go ahead and go to the. So as we mentioned, this was approved on August sixteenth, and it contains four major parts. And we're going to kind of break down each of the major parts in just a moment. Part one is the parents' rights, and there are about ten specific rights that serve as the overarching umbrella for subsequent sections. Part two is probably the most comprehensive section of the law. It has the parent guides and notification requirements and many timelines that are attached to that. Part three is healthcare minors. And this is an area that we have some questions about some of the wording and how this may impact our school nurses. And part four are the effective dates. And as you heard, our Board Attorney mentioned earlier, different components of the law have different effective dates. And so this is also outlined in some of the materials that we've given you. The law does include quite a few things that were already in place in current policies and laws that we already had, as well as new ones. So part of our challenge has had to be unpacking and crosswalking these side by side to determine what do we already have in place and what's actually new in the law. We are fortunate in that many of the things that we do in Chatham are already in place. And we're going to show you a document in just a little bit after we unpack the areas that will show you side by side the various components of the law, and then also the resources and tools and forms and websites and things that we have that will meet the letter of those particular aspects of the law. As we shared just a moment ago, there will be some policy updates that will be required as we unpack this further. So tonight was a great start in getting us compliant with those. And there will be some components you'll see in our documents where we cannot be compliant until the Department of Public Instruction takes the next step on their part. And I'll try to outline those as we go through so you're aware of which of those areas we would not be able to be in compliance with. So just to share with you a little bit about what we've been doing, we have set up a landing page to show the public information related to this. Right now, it says under construction, and we're working on being able to, after tonight, put policies and links and things to the materials that we'll be showing you. We've attended webinars and a variety of different legal events to learn more about these requirements. We've reviewed reviewed the bill as a leadership team at Dr. Jackson's request. We've created these crosswalks, which we'll unpack in a moment. We have shared information with our principals this summer during our summer leadership retreat, and we have that on our agenda this week as well in our business meeting with principals. We've also shared questions and potential next steps with our Board Attorney to seek advisement. And we've also planned our next parent advisory council meeting to help develop and use that group to be able to help us implement this work. You'll see in a moment, some of the requirements ask us to create guides for parents, and who better to do that than some of our parents? So on the nineteenth, our first parent advisory council meeting will be unpacking the same information with that group and also putting them into some working groups to help us meet some of these expectations. So that's the work we've done thus far. Any questions on what we've done thus? Okay, so now the fun part. So part one of the bill, here's a quick summary. It creates the Parent Bill of Rights. And as I mentioned earlier, there are ten overarching rights identified. It also places some limits on the right of a parent. It clarifies that parents cannot engage in unlawful conduct and in response to this particular set of legislation. And it also will not prevent personnel from acting in their official capacity with reasonable and prudent scope of their authority. And then finally, in part one, it does talk about some of the sanctions and the disciplinary action if we have staff members who coerce or encourage or attempt to have a child withhold information from their parents. And part one is one of the aspects that came became effective August sixteenth. So here on the next couple of slides, and we're not going to read every single one of these to you, but we're going to pop out and kind of talk about some of the key areas that will require a little more work on our part. So in part one, there are ten major rights afforded to parents to direct the education and care of their child, to direct the upbringing and moral religious training of their child, to enroll their child in a public or non-public school and any school choice options available to the parent, to access and review education records, to make healthcare decisions for their children, to review all medical records. Some of these things, you're probably thinking, we have most of these things in place. Number seven, to prohibit creation, sharing, or storage of biometric scans. I don't, I don't know that we do that, but that's in there to make sure that we're not doing that. To prohibit the creation and sharing of DNA. I don't think we have many teachers that are doing that either, but that's there nonetheless. To prohibit the creation of video and voice recordings of children, except in the following circumstances, and that's why that's highlighted. We want, because there were some folks that were concerned that that meant we could not record sporting events or other educational performances for the arts and things. So the law is really clear there about what type of video we are and are not allowed to conduct. And then the tenth area is for parents to be promptly notified if an employee of the state suspects that a criminal offense has been committed against their child. So those are kind of the ten overarching big components in part one. And then the next slide shares what those parent limitations are. Again, asking parents to, in the requirements of this article, not to engage in unlawful conduct, and then also not to abuse their children. And then it also gives our employees the ability to act in their official capacity with reasonable and prudent scope. And that's really kind of just a quick summary of part one. Any questions on part one before we move on to part two?
Yeah, question. Okay, so where is the federal law in this? Where is this saying limitations about interfering with the curriculum of the school or interfering with the flow of information to a school? Why would that not be in?
Can you repeat the question?
Okay, so you know, up until this point, up until this bill, schools vibreed on the set of law that parents don't have the right to interfere in the curriculum of the school or to stop the flow of information coming to the school.
I'm not familiar with those specific rights that you're describing. I would say as a general matter, with some exceptions, schools are are generally subject to and controlled by the state. Now, there are, there are areas where the federal law speaks to school system issues like C, FERBA, and and the like, and that certainly would would trump in those instances. And I I think that as Dr. Moran was going through some of the highlights here, a couple of examples stand out, like the right to access and review all education records as authorized by the FERBA Act. That that's been a law forever.
Yeah.
So there's really nothing new there to access, review all medical records. That's been there forever. Number three, there was a lot of concern. This is to do with placement and and school choice options. When this first came out, a lot of people thought that this was sort of a whole new scheme of school enrollment and assignment, and it's not. It's just what the law currently is. So a lot of the nuts and bolts really are not changes. Some, some are, and as Dr. Moran indicated, frankly, a lot of them are not necessarily relevant to the day-to-day operations of of schools like biometric data. We need to be aware of. We certainly need to comply with them, but they're not things that we're we're doing day in and day out. So that's kind of how I see the interplay between state and federal law. And I I do think it's important to remember that not all of the rights in this bill are at all new.
Yes, and to follow up on Ms. Turner's point, when you look at the right listed number one, to direct the education and care of his or her child. I think that's always been a well-established constitutional right. At your home, you can choose how to educate your child. If you put him in our public schools, does that mean that a parent now has the right to tell the public school what the curriculum is going to be?
No, I think the parent has the right to the things that are enumerated in this bill. I don't think that this provide, and I think that the language about the the school employees from acting in their official capacity within the reasonable and prudent scope of their authority. The way I think of it is that the school board runs the school system. We have employees who do their job. They have roles and responsibilities. They carry those out. That's the baseline, and that continues. That that I I don't think this is radical change in who runs or controls the schools. I think, I think where there is a shift is that there is this new set of enumerated rights and information requirements and the right to appeal or challenge certain things that didn't exist before. And those are changes. I don't think that that means that schools, that the school board or the school system doesn't control the schools. I think that stays the same, but there are this just new set of set of requirements and set of rights that that are in effect. And so I don't see it as a radical shift. It's not a shift of control. I do think that it does, it just enumerate certain things that that were not necessarily there before.
I think too, what you'll notice, Ms. Bryanstein, to get to your question as well, I think what you'll notice is part one kind of gives you the broad brush of what are the ten major categories. And then part two then gives you the scope of of each of those. I'll move on to part two. So part two, a quick summary. It requires public school units to provide parents with information about their legal rights and to develop policies governing a range of topics. Also, to create parental guides for student achievement, guide for parental involvement in schools, and a timeline for parents to request and receive certain information from principals. It also prohibits public schools from including instruction on gender identity, sexual activity, and sexuality in the curriculum for grades K and four, which is not a part of our standard course of study and is not a part of any curricular resources we have here in Chatham. And then it also requires us to adopt policies for parents to express concerns regarding required notifications about mental and physical health and instruction and a process for resolving those concerns. So we're going to dig into the twelve major sections of part two. Again, we don't have time to get into every single one of these, so we're going to kind of hit it a little fast here about some of the main areas that will require us to do a little bit more work. You'll go ahead and go to the next slide. So these are the twelve areas. One of those areas is the parents' legal rights for their child's education. And the next slide will show what those twelve specific rights are. And some of these are things that we've had in place for a really long time. Making sure that parents have the right to participate and and select if their children participate in reproductive health programs, the right to seek medical or religious exemptions from immunizations, that's not new. The right to review statewide standard assessment results, again, not new. The right to request an evaluation of their child for academically intellectually gifted programs or identification of a child with disability, we have had that in place as well. Item number five is one that I think we would like to have more guidance on, which is why we've highlighted it here. The right to inspect and purchase public school unit textbooks and other supplementary instructional materials. I think we would always want to be transparent with families about what resources and materials we're using. We post pacing guides for families. We post our curriculum. Depending upon how one might interpret this particular item could be problematic. If we think about what teachers do with their lesson plans each day, they monitor their instruction, they differentiate, so they have multiple sets of lesson plans and materials for different groups of students. And they also may change those plans accordingly based off formative assessment they're doing in class. My fear with this, if it's taken too far into what inspect means, if that means posting everything that a teacher's going to use in a classroom ahead of time, I fear that our teachers would spend more time scanning and uploading every worksheet, every video, every map, every supplementary material versus planning quality instruction for our students. So we have, this is an area we've asked for more guidance around. We've always had a policy in our district that parents can inspect any curricular materials, and that still is in place. But this is one that I think many districts have have concerns around.
So I, doesn't it say the right to inspect and purchase, and these parents can purchase textbooks and suggest they can, that they may include in.
In the time, we've had parents who have asked the publisher of textbooks, and we've, you know, allowed them to do that. It doesn't say we have to purchase it for them, and so that's not that uncommon. Over the years, I've had several of those types of requests. But that one is is a little ambiguous, so we we want to see a little further clarification there. Some of the other items here, the right to receive report cards on a regular basis. We have a clear process for that in place already. You'll keep going to the next one. Parents' Guide for Student Achievement. This one is very specific and is a larger portion of this part two. If you go to the next slide, it shows you the requirements for what has to be in that parent's guide. There are nine specific things that have to be in these guides, but the part that's highlighted is important to note. Before we can do this as Chatham County Schools, the State Board of Education has to develop the minimum requirements for these parents' guides. And then the Department of Public Instruction has to then create that for the state level, and then Chatham would create what we have. And the document that we're going to show you in just a moment where we've done the crosswalk, I'm pretty pleased to be able to say that almost every area that is requested here, we already have on our website for parents now. I think what we could do a better job of, and we've heard this from parents in our strategic planning conversations, is that we need to streamline those resources, which I think our parent advisory council can help us do, and make them a little more accessible with less clicks. So having this crosswalk, I think, will help us do that. But I'm not worried about, we're not worried about us having to create this because we already have most of these things. So you can see here the the items that are required, things like promotion things, what textbook materials we use, the progress of of children, progressing to the next level, qualifications of a child's teaching, school entry requirements, the vast majority of those things we already have. The second piece of it here is specific guides for parents. Um the second piece of it here is specific guides for parents that can help them um. Help their children at home, can help them um with their social skills, can also help their children. Um have high expectations for their ch- children. And creating a strong emphasis on communication between the school and the home, so this is. That area number two is where we really want our parent advisory council to help us dig in and create some of those flyers and materials for our parents. We already have also a a um parent academies, um every month we do those as a part of our strategic plan work. So we'll make sure that the areas that are required here in uh the Bill of Rights, we'll use some of those parent academy sessions as a way to continue to educate parents. And if you go to page, I'm on the one that says part two highlights, numbers four through nine, I think you need a backup. There we go. Um one of the items, number six, educational choices available to parents, this was an area that. Um we do not have currently on our website that we would need to work to create this, and what this is suggesting is that. We would need to um make available to parents every type of public school. Unit available to residents in their county which the child attends, any non-public school options or educational choice options. And so we typically have shared resources with parents about tutoring and after school programs and things like that. But we have not advertised private schools, charter schools, homeschool, um and that type of thing.
Of course, I would reciprocate to, I'm sure.
They're required to.
No, I knew that. I knew that. My wife does too all the time, so I have to be really careful, oh yes.
So that particular item is one that we we would need to create a section of our website, um and a part of our parental guides that does have that um available. And you'll go to the next section, the notifications related to student physical and mental health. There are two pieces here, one is prior to administration of students in kindergarten through third grade. Um we are required to provide a copy of a student well being questionnaire or health screening form. Um this is an area also that we would need to create a process for. And making sure that we have um a very clear type process for um staff and for any of our um health professionals. Number five, um wanted to highlight this one. Prior to any changes in the name or pronoun used for a student in school and school records by school personnel, notice to the parent of the change. Um this is something that we've had in place for a long time in Chatham, we have a form that's been in place, I believe, since twenty twenty, I believe. Um and so we have always required um parent signature on that form here in Chatham, and that was in reference to. Um when the state of North Carolina provided the ability in power school to do a preferred name change. And we put that procedure in place some time ago, so we felt good about the fact that we do have a process for that. Age appropriate instruction for grades kindergarten through fourth grade is another area. It's highlighted. And this really just speaks about any instruction on gender identity, sexual activity um or sexuality should not be included in the curriculum. Provided in grades kindergarten through fourth grade. Um and I think it's important to note here, this is not a part of the health and wellness standards for the state of North Carolina, and is not on any. Type of curricular material or resource that we have here in our district. But I wanted to point out the last statement, can you go back to part two highlights? Where it says instruction on gender equity and identity.
Let's see.
I think you're going in the, you're going backwards instead of forwards.
Good slide nineteen.
Yeah, thank you.
I thought you said go back, I'm sorry.
Point out the last statement here, um this does not include responses to student initiated questions. Um and if you've ever been a K five teacher, you know that sometimes students will bring up things um. In class that may be are not part of the instruction, and so that particular item does. Um provide the ability to be able to address students, now we'll have to talk with our teachers about the right way to do that and to um. Able to have communication with families about those things, but um we can't control what. Uh students are going to say in the classroom or what types of things um they may ask.
Not just K five either. Got some others that will bring, yeah, a lot of guys to step to, yeah.
Um the next one we wanted to highlight in part two is parental rights to opt in to protected informational surveys. Um this is an area where um the definition is really important, you'll go to the next slide. Of what a protected survey is, this does not mean that we cannot survey students um at all. This means that we cannot ask specific things in a survey, and the items that are deemed protected. Are political affiliations or beliefs of the student or the student's parent. Mental or um psychological problems of the student or the student's family, sex behavior or attitudes. Illegal antisocial self incriminating or demeaning behavior. Critical appraisals of other individuals which respondents have close family relationships. Legally recognized privilege or now analogous relationships such as the lawyers or physicians or ministers of the students. Religious practices, affiliations, et cetera, income other than what is required by law to determine eligibility. Um so those are the types of things that are protected, so we still will have. Um times that we'll have surveys for parents or surveys for students. But we will need as a district to be really clear with our teachers and our principals about. What that needs to look like, what are the notification requirements and what types of things are off limits. Um and this is one that, you know, we will have to do a little bit more work on.
And the state superintendent, I think, um remember she was opt in was one of the things she had.
And with correct. And they are seeking. Based on her um last comment to carve out when they used risk. Behavior survey. Uh because I believe that's required by federal Sunday, the youth risk. Uh behavior survey is one that I should, they're specifically trying to seek a carve out on.
Was they opt in?
With the with the with the um. Uh the technical correction just being that being one that's being allowed. Uh the uh as opposed to others, but that may ask some of these questions. That's a carve out in the law where they the everything else is strictly adhered to here. The carve out would say that that one survey is acceptable. Is that correct, is that a correct way to?
So these are, the surveys are are not illegal, they just have, they you need prior written consent. Opt in, so you can you can do the surveys. You just have to get that that prior written consent, I think what Dr. Jackson is saying is that for that specific survey. They're trying to take that out of the opt in requirement or just let you give it.
Traditionally in our district, we have had an opt out process for most of our surveys of this nature, so. We would need to change our process so that it's an opt in, um which will be a little bit more work in making sure that we're um having a process and a structure for that. So that. Completes part two highlight. Part three is a little easier. Part three gets into the healthcare practitioners providing medical treatment to minors without parental consent. Um they define healthcare practitioner as a registered licensed school nurse and any other. School staff licensed certified or authorized to provide healthcare services. Um in the ordinary cause of business course of business treatments. So a medical treatment is defined to include any medical procedure, treatment, including x rays, administration of drugs. Blood transfusions, use of anesthetics, lab or other diagnostic procedures. Um and then it goes into there the underlying portion. Um that healthcare practitioner or staff who violates this section is subject to disciplinary action. Um up to five thousand dollars, the concern we have here is that it is a little, it not a little, it's a lot ambiguous. About what is medical treatment? And um in one of the areas, it talks about having to have written consent specifically, I think it's on the next slide if you'll go to the next slide.
Is it for written consent for specific procedures, or can you at the beginning of the year say we have your written? Cause I mean if a child has an emergency at school, you don't want to have your hands tied.
Does not say, and so one of our questions that we have is just that, can we have a a general opt in and at the beginning of the year that will cover any of our staff? Um or does it, is it specific to this particular nurse, this particular staff member, and the way that it's currently written is. A little iffy about what the actual intent is here.
Well, state law takes care of the emergency, am I correct on that anyway? Procedure, that's what I've understood it anyway, if it's definitely deemed an emergency. Well, so there there is definitely concern about whether or not this would prevent. Emergency treatment absent prior consent, I don't think anybody thinks that was the intent, there is a reading of it. I think that would get you to that result. We have some folks in our office who are really digging into this, and I know that they're talking to, they they spoke, I think today to someone, an expert at the school government. There's also an argument that. This actually doesn't apply at all to school nurses, and that school nurses can keep going on about their business and doing what they've always done, which I think obviously would be. What we where we wanted to get to, so. Our team and and we literally have a team of people that's essentially now dedicated to the parents' bill of rights in our office. They're they're churning through all of this and and seeking other guidance. Uh but it's it's definitely one that's concerning because we would never want a situation where. A nurse could get into trouble for providing life saving treatment.
Or what even is what they perceived to be at the time life saving. And 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 also, if this is, this seems like an area when you were mentioning federal law where. It could be inconsistent with federal law, is that of concern to you?
I'm not sure. That was mentioned in the school board association, the league conference, so they they did mention federal law. So it says something different, yeah.
Right. So if I if I worked at First Health and got a call from one of the schools saying we've got a kid here, then. Are they gonna sit there and say, well, according to this, the way it's written. Is the parent giving me permission? You come and save your child from dying. I mean, I I I'm going to the extreme, but. But but the way it's re- and and I know things get clearer now, but that's that's how. I hate to use word silly, but. I don't think anybody down the road at First Health would say, no, we aren't gonna come over to the school.
Yeah, and I turn, I do think that the definition of healthcare care practitioner in in the law. Is directed at school system people. Not outside unrelated medical providers. But I don't think it would impact.
You don't think.
Well, I mean.
I'm just, I'm just saying, I mean, there's always.
Yes, there there are clearly ambiguities that need to be looked at.
And and even how they define treatments, because what is treatment, I mean, what is?
Sure needs to, before giving a child a Band-Aid for something, you probably wouldn't send someone to the school nurse anyways, that mean they have to check to see if they have. The parents, you know, permission to give that Band-Aid to a kid.
Our question exactly. So lots of fuzzy language on there. So. Parts, actually I think I'm finished with the parts, so next steps and actions needed, you're almost in the home stretch, yeah, okay. Um so some of the things that we've identified as a leadership group um that we need to do moving forward. Um as we receive more clarification, I'm scheduling a board work session to review all of these next steps and the implications that has for our district. Updating policies as they come along, which we've done the first leg of that tonight. Provide full training for all district staff and school leaders, we'll start that on the thirteenth with our principals. Sharing information with our parent advisory committee and seeking their support and developing information for families, again, that's happening on the nineteenth. Sharing additional information once developed on our district website for all stakeholders. Developing our parents' guide to student achievement, again, that's one that will require more work from DPI and the state board. And then sharing with all stakeholders once additional information becomes available. Um and the next slide gives some supporting documents for the board and for stakeholders. Um we have a link there to the full parent bill of rights, full legislation. We also have a bill summary which kind of does similar to what I did this evening, like break down each of the major components. There's also a letter from the state superintendent where she shares specific um information and implications for. Um superintendents and district staff. There's a parent bill of rights crosswalk from DPI. That on one side shows you um what pieces of the law were already in place, and then on the right side it shows you what things are new. And then the last piece that we wanted to share with you. Um this is not something that's posted just yet, we're putting some finishing touches on this, but this is a Chatham crosswalk. Um all of those resources are linked at the top, we are envisioning that this would be something that we would have on our landing page or the parent bill of rights. If you can maybe blow that up just a little bit so you can see it larger. There'll be buttons where parents can click on the different parts, so for example, if you click on part two. There should be a hyperlink that will come up and it'll pop you down to part two. And you'll see on the far left hand column, you'll see the actual part of the law, so the actual for people that get real. Um into the legal smiggle part, that gives you the exact section and part of the law. Then it gives you the exact wording of the law itself. And then on the far right column, you're gonna see helpful tools and forms and resources that we have here in Chatham to meet that specific item of the parent bill of rights. Um most of those items are already linked in such as board policies. Various curricular materials, if you'll keep scrolling down, you'll see some areas that are pink highlighted, those are items that will need our attention. But as you scroll, look at all of the things that Chatham already has, keep scrolling. So almost line by line, we have the vast majority of this, and. So while it seemed really big and pretty ambiguous, and yes, there are areas that we know we need to get some clarity on. We feel pretty good that we have a lot of these things already in place. And if you'll scroll all the way to the bottom, we did want to show you this form section. Part two goes on forever, never, 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 which is why there are buttons at the top. Um thank you. Scroll back up just a tad, right there, so this particular section has um important forms. That speak to some of the reporting requirements, some of the opt in requirements. Um and some of the information items that are required in the law, so you can see some of those documents and forms that we already have in place, such as the name change form. And a few others like the healthcare forms and things. So we wanted um our stakeholders to be able to see exactly what the law is and then be very transparent about what we have and what we know we still need to work on to be able to meet this. Um so um we hope this will be a helpful resource for both the board and for. Um our stakeholders, and again, it's still in draft mode, we're working to get it on live and ready to go, but. Um Mr. Wood and I will be working to get that on the website soon.
Did the um. Let's forget part five. And that is requiring the parents to read and sign off saying that they read every word of this. And they understand. I mean, this, this is, you know, um a a a dictation of changing our. Our administration's lives drastically. And um. To just understand it, not that, like I said, we go top that I. I've heard ninety five, ninety six, I push it to ninety eight or ninety nine percent, we've been doing it. But. It didn't seem to be anything in there saying that the, you know, the parents have a right to this, right, this. Well, don't we have a right to know that they have read this? Man, I'm being facetious, but I just.
Someone used the analogy with me the other day, um ever when you see on different. Children's toys or other types of things out there, these really crazy tags that say. Do not put your child's head in a plastic bag and clothing, like it seems ridiculous. But somewhere that had to have happened to require that to be in place. Kind of made sense that while we're pretty fortunate in Chatham that we have a lot of systems and procedures, we have good relationships with our parents. There are probably some districts out there that maybe don't have some of these things in place, and it can help them get better, so. We're gonna try to focus on the things that we can work on um and continue to see clarity where we can.
Is there questions?
Yeah, I'll I'll only add, and first of all, I want to thank. Uh Dr. Moran and the senior team. Uh for just a tremendous amount of work pulling all of this together, having deep conversations. Um Dr. Moran loves a good Google Doc, so we can always put some stuff together. But but um I do want to say this, um there's not one. Funding mechanism for this, Dr. Moran's job is the assistant superintendent for instruction. We've got new teachers right now who need support in classrooms. And this is what we're spending our time on. So I would only say that there's not been one. Dime. Uh that and we're now talking about how we might be able to. Provide additional resources to hire teachers, to incentivize hiring teachers, to get more math teachers to do. This is what our instructional people have had. This is what our instructional people have had to spend their time on, not getting our new teachers prepared to teach mathematics. Not getting our new teachers prepared to plan good lessons. And so I, 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 I will stand up for them. They have done a tremendous job. Of taking this thing apart and, and trying to make it make sense. And as you can tell, we're not negative about it. We're going to do what we're required to do. Um, but I want to, uh, applaud my team this, this evening for the work that they have done. To try to make this make sense so that it does not get to teachers having to make sense out of this. And then the final piece, I want to thank our legal staff. They have responded very quickly. They have a whole team, as he said. Working on this, trying to make sure we get good legal advice. Um, sometimes the best advice is not good legal advice, but we're going to wait for them to give it to us anyway and do the right things. Um, because it's the right thing to do for kids. But our commitment is we don't have school. We're going to do right by kids. And I'll, I'll leave it there.
Thank you again for all the work. Dr. Moran, if you'll pass that along to staff too, we appreciate tremendously and, um. Thank you for all of that, very much so. Okay, we'll move on to action items. Item A. Resolution clarifying position, Chatham County Board of Education on Senate Bill forty-nine, Parents' Bill of Rights. And. Can we pull up the resolution? If y'all bear with me, I haven't read my students in class in several years, so I'll read this real quickly if I can. Um, whereas the Chatham County Board of Education recognizes the importance of honor, respecting, protecting the rights of all students, parents, and guardians. And whereas the Chatham County Board of Education is committed to providing a safe, inclusive. And respectful learning environment for all students. And whereas the Chatham County Board of Education has consistently supported policies and procedures. Full of parent engagement and involvement. And whereas the Chatham County Board of Education strives to consistently provide through policies and practices, opportunities. For students and parents towards concerns, creatively problem solve and effectively resolve disputes amicably. And whereas many of the provisions outlined, Senate Bill forty-nine are already available to parents in our district. In one form or another through policies, practices, or procedures. And whereas the Chatham County Board of Education believes, as Senate Bill forty-nine, the North County Parents' Bill of Rights includes provisions in language. That are highly likely to create confusion for school personnel and the execution of their official roles. And whereas the Chatham County Board of Education is concerned that Senate Bill forty-nine. North County Parents' Bill of Rights could negatively impact certain students and staff. Now therefore be it resolved, Chatham County Board of Education affirms its commitment to protecting and supporting the rights of all students. Regardless of their sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, religious belief, disability, race, or national origin. Affirms that it will not support any practices or policies that discriminate against any student, staff, member, and family. Affirms its commitment to collaborating with the community to create a safe and inclusive learning environment for all students. Affirms its commitment and responsibility as elected officials to follow all applicable laws and regulations. Including those set forth in Senate Bill forty-nine, not covered in existing policy or under the purview of other agencies. Affirms its concern that many provisions in Senate Bill forty-nine, North County Parents' Bill of Rights. Could have potential negative effects on the well-being of some students. Directs the administration to collaborate with legal counsel to develop new and update existing policies. Practices and procedures to ensure that the concerns and interests of all parents and guardians are honored. As well as the dignity and rights of all students in our school system. And encourages ongoing communication and collaboration with parents, guardians, students. And community members to foster a supportive, inclusive, uh, inclusive educational environment for all. And of course, it's adopted by, uh, we'll need a motion to do this, but it's got the. Adopted by and of course, got our names there to sign, so.
I move that we adopt this resolution as read.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor with an eye? Eye? Any opposed, like signs? Unanimous, thank you. Will, Dr. Moran, we'll move to you. Item B, our, uh, resolution arts and education week.
So, um, each year, September tenth through the sixteenth is Arts and Education Week. Um, and as you know, Chatham County Schools have a longstanding history of supporting the arts across our district. Um, our schools are competitive in both local, regional, state, and national level arts events. We have been named, I believe, for the third consecutive year, one of the best communities for music education. One of only two in the state of North Carolina. For our commitment in supporting music education in schools. Um, we also have support from our Chatham Arts Council who provide our schools, if you're not aware, we can get you these dates this year. Um, we have artist residencies in our schools across the district.
We got an email this week, actually. It's got the dates in there, correct?
Yeah.
Great. So if you, um, have the opportunity, please go out and see those, um, performances. Basically, they work with an artist. And then at the end, there's usually some type of culminating performance in the schools. We also, for the first time this whole year, have the artist year Americorps members serving in our schools. Um, and they're teaching artists that pair up with one of our arts teachers. Um, and help deliver quality instruction for our students. So it's more, um, bodies in our schools helping support the arts. Um, and this goes back to, um, House Resolution two seventy-five back in two thousand and ten. Um, asking for this to be a national recognition, um, each year. So. Um, we say in Chatham that we want every student to be able to find a path or multiple paths. And we say, I think Dr. Jackson coined this. Um, the three A's. Um, so we want students to find themselves on the academic path, the arts path. And or an athletic path. There's got to be something for everyone. And the arts is just such a huge part of those paths for so many students. Um, I know as a former parent myself, um, the arts was what kept my child engaged in the pool. Um, we will be celebrating this year in a variety of ways. Um, our amazing PR team is going to be highlighting some of our new arts teachers. Um, in the district in small, um, vignettes and videos highlighting those new staff. So please be on the lookout for those. We'll also be highlighting some of the state, regional, and national awards that our staff and our students have won in the past year. Some of which are included in your packet. So you'll be seeing more, um, over the next week and the next month of some of these ways we're going to celebrate the arts. And we appreciate your support of the work we do with the arts.
Before I make the motion, you're still a parent, aren't you?
Well, she's almost twenty-two, so former Chatham County School student who's now an employee.
You were a parent.
CCS parent, I like it, yeah.
Fly out of the nest of them.
Got about three seconds there. No, uh, and I think now, did I see something about our superintendent? And the Arts Council, I can't remember. I want to think. Yeah, I don't know. I want to think something.
I saw him in a video for about childcare.
I might like the arts, just.
Yeah, I think so. Okay, all in favor of the resolution, uh, please designate, say, I.
I.
I. Any opposed, like signs unanimous? Our next board of education meeting is Monday, October the ninth, twenty twenty-three at five thirty here. Do I have a motion to return to closed session with items listed on the agenda?
Chair, if you don't mind, if I might offer, and I apologize it was not added on your thing. Uh, if you'll save the date for September twenty-eighth, that's our open, uh, ribbon cutting for this building, September twenty-eighth at, uh, eleven AM. Sorry about that. Thank you.
And I believe what, tens or twos?
Twos, yes. Our students will be here and it'll be a great morning.
And do I have a motion to return to closed session? Got a motion, got a second?
Yeah.
This term was second, yeah. Uh, all in favor with an eye?
Eye.
Thank you.